Okay, and we are live. So it's 7:00 PM. I will call tonight's Lunenburg Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, May 4th, 2021 to order. In accordance with the requirements of the Open Meeting Law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. Town of Lunenburg in response to the COVID-19 pandemic is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent its spread. In accordance with the Governor's Order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable, on Facebook Live, and on the face, uh, Public Access Facebook page, and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after its conclusion. Uh, if you would like to participate in this meeting, you have a computer, a tablet, or a smartphone, you can use the Zoom application, and tonight's meeting's webinar ID is 909-174-0347. If you would like to participate but don't have a smart device, or choose not to use a smart device, you can use your telephone by dialing 888-475-4499, and again, the webinar ID is 909-174-0347. If you wish to speak during this meeting, if you are on the Zoom application, please familiarize yourself with the Raise Your Hand button, which is located under Reactions somewhere on your Zoom screen, depending on your device. If you are on the phone and wish to raise your hand to speak, please dial *9. I will see hands raised, and I will call on people by name at the appropriate time. The agenda that was posted lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting, and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the Open Meeting Law. So well, the call to order, let's do a roll call. Ms. Adams?
Yeah.
Mr. Dwyer?
President.
Mr. Marino?
Here.
Mr. Jeffries?
I'm here.
And I, Tom Alonso, Chair and President. Madam Town Manager, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I now hand it over to our pledge leader, Ms. Adams, with her flag. Please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, any public comment this evening from the board? No, no public comment from the board. Public comment from the public. Mr. Burch, hold on, let me get you unmuted here.
My name's Mark Burch. Can you hear me now?
Ken, you have the floor.
Okay. Okay, my name's Mark Burch. I live at 20 Buttonwood Place. At town meeting this past Saturday, comments were made by an individual personally attacking public volunteers and small business owners. This was not the first time this individual has made inappropriate comments in a public forum. This individual has also posted personal attacks on the Lunenburg YouTube Public Access Channel that needed, that had to be removed. This individual personally attacked myself, business owners in the community, as being self-serving and having no place on public boards. I take great exception to this for myself and all the business owners in the community. I've been a call firefighter for over 30 years. I serve on the Board of Water Commissioners, and I've donated numerous hours and dollars to the improvement of this community from my business, asking for nothing in return. The fact that I called the point of order and was dismissed, the fact that neither the town moderator nor the board had any response to these comments was disheartening. It took another resident of the community to acknowledge the fact that public service is a tough job, and people donate their time, and there's no room or place for personal attacks. I didn't think this board condones that behavior. I don't think this issue, I do think this issue and type of behavior needs to be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the public? Uh, I will, I was gonna make this comment during our review of annual town meeting articles, but since it was brought up in public comment, uh, I will say that I, at town meeting, I heard several, during several articles, members impugn the integrity of several of our board members, commission members, committee members, uh, not staying with the facts or the article in front of them, but going after people personally and imparting on them motives and intents that they are, could not support or did not support, and therefore seem to be slanderous, at least in the general public sense, not, maybe not in the legal sense. Uh, I would remind people, as the public commenter just did, that these people serve, that, first of all, they're members of our community. They're fellow neighbors and citizens. They serve as volunteers on these boards and commissions, and are charged to do sometimes very difficult and very precarious tasks, and issues come before them. And while it's okay to disagree on issues and disagree on facts before the issues, I really find it distasteful and disheartening, as did the commenter, that people would go after members of each board, uh, and, and project on them, you know, evil and nefarious intents. Uh, it really is uncalled for. It's really unnecessary, and it really actually hurts, not helps, the public discourse of the matters at hand. So I would call on people to really refrain from any such action, and, uh, to the point of seeing the comments, I didn't see the comments that the, that the, uh, public commenter mentioned, but if I had, I would have, I would have commented on to those persons, not on the public board, but privately. Uh, it is not something we can really have. We have a tough time getting volunteers as it is, and to, for other people who may have a desire to serve, to see the way people who are already serving treated, is really not going to serve the town very well at all. Uh, I know two people in particular that were mentioned by name or by their position at the town meeting, and I just want to call out a special call out to them. The Chair of the APDC, Richard McGrath, and the Chair of the Conservation Commission, Bob Pease, were both called out by members of town meeting as having ill motives about, you know, doing things for the wrong intent and everything. And I want to say publicly that I, not only will those fall into the category of what I'm discussing now as distasteful and everything, I would also say they're patently untrue. I've worked closely with both of those members, and they have my full support in all the work that they do, and they do a lot of good work. Okay? We may, we may not agree on all the issues with, with, I may not agree on those issues with those two gentlemen, but those two gentlemen bring a lot of experience and a lot of energy and a lot of time and a lot of, a lot of effort to their jobs, and I fully support them, and I want that to be known, as far as people, you know, again, maligning even people who aren't serving but fellow business owners, that true too is distasteful. So again, I really urge people to keep on point for issues at hand and not fall far astray with some, you know, other motives that they cannot prove and have no, no facts for. Uh, let's keep it civil. Let's keep it on the issues, and maybe then we can get people, uh, who want to be involved to get involved, and the people who are already involved, hopefully they stay involved. One last chance, if there's any other public comment from the public. Uh, Mr. Dwyer?
Uh, I just wanted to follow on to your comments, Tom, um, because I, I've also been disturbed by the, the discourse from people, and, and they do this in many cases. They accuse board members on, on several boards of, of being corrupt or having some sort of, uh, uh, serving for some sort of, uh, uh, you know, financial gain or, or business gain or something like that, and having served on Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen. It's untrue, and I think before people go and, and start accusing people of corruption, maybe you should stop. We have all these openings in town where we need volunteers. I encourage people, instead of, uh, disparaging board members, get involved. See for yourself how all these people on all the boards that serve our town do this just out of their own, um, desire to serve the town and make their community better. We, we all love Lunenburg. That's why we do this. At the end of the day, if we disagree on issues, that, that's just issues. Those, those are small things in the grand scheme of how we, how we treat our, our fellow neighbors. So, uh, that's all I wanted to say, but thank you.
Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, I support everything you said, Mr. Alonso, everything that Mr. Dwyer just said. Thank you, Mr. Burch, for coming here tonight. Uh, at the last week's meeting, at the very end, I made a public comment about discourse and, uh, and how inappropriate it is to, uh, tear down members who volunteer their times to sit on boards, and, you know, I, it was only a week ago, and I, I certainly didn't have a foresight of what we were gonna see at town meeting. You know, I, I know that we all step up into these roles, and we're, as a result of that, open to a certain level of criticism, and, uh, my hope is that that criticism will be focused on the things that we do, uh, and the actions that we take, and not on us as individuals, uh, or disrespect people who simply have a different perspective. I think that you're correct, um, in, in being offended, as was evident by your remarks tonight, uh, and I hope that as we move forward, that, you know, members of the community will hear this, and as Mr. Dwyer just said, step up. We have vacancies. There's multiple opportunities for people to get engaged, um, and, you know, we're all in this for, hopefully the right reasons and for a brief period of time. Um, you know, these jobs and these roles need to be filled. We need to fill them, um, but it is a sacrifice, and I thank you for your sacrifice, the sacrifice you've made to our town over the years, and, uh, I hope that this kind of stuff just stops.
Mr. Marino?
I too want to express my support to your comments, uh, Mr. Chairman, and to the comments made by Selectmen Dwyer and Jeffries, and I would just like to remind people that the most difficult part of this job, and particularly with issues that we're alluding to that occurred at tunnel meeting, um, is to try to understand both sides of those issues, and, and then come to some common ground. Uh, I want to remind people that if they do volunteer for, uh, uh, any of these boards, that that's what they need to bring to the table. Um, and, and again, I totally support everybody's comments, and thanks. I'd like to thank Mark Burch for coming forward with his as well.
Ms. Adams?
And what I'll contribute to the conversation, um, I've certainly, you know, been in the shoes of feeling uncomfortable during a meeting, is I think we're talking about this retroactively, and, and what we need to do is to, I think, confront the situation while it's happening. I think that will be the way to make meetings and outcomes better, is knowing when and how and who can step in if somebody's feeling uncomfortable, because it's certainly easier to remedy it while it's happening than to all agree it shouldn't have happened after the fact. Um, and so I don't know, you know, how this goes on an agenda or what the topic is, but there's certainly a protocol in a meeting in terms of whether a, the moderator steps in, or should its chair step in, and so my, my question to all of us would be, um, how should we or could we intervene in a meeting if we feel something's uncomfortable? I've been in those shoes. I've asked, you know, for, uh, certain conversations to cease, and so I know that, uh, feeling of discomfort and, and the solution needs to happen when it, when it's happening, uh, to be completely sincere.
Do? Okay, seeing no one's hand up, we will, uh, we will need to all work harder and, uh, to address this, and, and hopefully the message gets out, but, uh, I have a funny hunch it's gonna be a message over years that it'll pop up from now on, from time to time, and we'll just have to address it then as well. So if everybody keeps that in mind, that will be, of course, a step in the right direction. I have no announcements. Madam Town Manager, do you have any announcements tonight?
I do not.
Okay. Uh, appointments. Well, appointments until 7:30, so how about we go to Select Board appointments to the Board of Registars? These are, we did some of these last week, but the ones for the Republican Party nominee, we didn't have everybody, uh, on to interview because of scheduling. So I see that, uh, Ms. Rudd, um, trying to remember who, did we interview Ms. Kelly yet last week? Or, yes, Ms. Kelly. So today we have Ms. Rudd, and I believe we have Ms. Anderson on the phone. Let me just find out.
I think we spoke to Lorraine last week.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Uh, I'm asking whoever's on the phone to unmute. I believe that's *6. You're unmuted now. Who is this on the phone?
Ruth Anderson.
Okay, Ruth, because we have you on the phone already, we'll start with you, if that's okay.
Okay.
All right, so, um, so as I've asked everybody, just, first of all, start with who you are for those people who may not know you in town, and then talk about why, what your experience has been with this, if you have any with the Board of Registars, and why you want to continue or why you want to be on the Board of Registars.
I believe I submitted a letter to you to be read, but, um, my name is Ruth Anderson. I live at 31 Elaine. I've lived here over 50 years. I've been a poll worker at the elections for over 30 years, and I've been a registrar for over 20 years. Um, I like what I do. Uh, there's a lot of work involved in doing, being a registrar for the elections. Uh, this past year was very, um, um, trying, I guess that's not the word I want to use, but with COVID, we, I think we did an excellent job as the four registrars to bring the elections to the town very well. The presidential election, we took in over 6,000 people, I believe, between all the paperwork that we had to mail out, the ballots, and how we handled all the, uh, people coming in to vote on, on Election Day. Um, I enjoy what I do, and I'd like to continue that if I possibly could.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I will open it up to the board if anybody has any questions. The letter that, uh, Ms. Anderson, uh, the statement that she provided us is in our Google Drive. She basically covered all those points, uh, that she just mentioned in her statement, but if anybody has any questions, I would, Ms. Adams?
Um, I would just say it sounds like a very impressive resume. It's all in decades, not years. Um, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Marino?
Yeah, I, of course, I've known Ruth for years, and I should have known, uh, last week that there must have been, uh, some, something amiss, because I guess what we didn't see is her name at the bottom of the email list, and I apologize for that, Ruth, and, uh, of course, you've done a phenomenal job over the last several years, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Uh, actually, Mr. Marino, thank you for apologizing, but actually, the apology is from me, because I'm the one who read it and said out loud that I didn't see it. It actually was on page two of the email from the Republican Town Committee, so it was, uh, I mean, I guess all of us missed it, but as Chair, I take full responsibility for, for having missed it. So again, Ruth, I apologize for that. Uh, but you are here today, and we didn't appoint anybody yet, so, uh, I thank you. Obviously, if you've done it for this long and you want to keep doing it, you must enjoy your job. I thought that was kind of, kind of redundant, otherwise you wouldn't have been doing it for this long.
Correct.
All right, well, I appreciate it. Just hang on, and we're, we're gonna interview, uh, Ms. Rudd as well next. Okay. Ms. Rudd, I am going to unmute you. Ms. Rudd, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. I can't, can you hear me?
Uh, we can hear you, yes.
Good, thanks.
So again, I'll ask you to start the same way. Introduce yourself to the board and all the same questions.
Okay, I'm Lorraine Rudd. I live at 340 Highland Street. I've been here for over 30 years. Um, good member of town, no troublemaker here. Um, I like to help. I'm a big volunteer. Worked in the school, helped Girl Scouts. Um, I'm semi-retired now, so I have more time. Um, let's see, for, gosh, 30-plus years, I've worked in office administration. I've worked in, uh, information, uh, data, technical documents, so I'm attention to detail. I'd like, I'd like to just, I just thought I, whatever I could do to help the vote go as clean as possible and smoothly, I am a, I'm happy to volunteer and help.
Well, I thank you for putting your name forward to volunteer. I open up to, to the board. Anybody would ask, would like to ask Ms. Rudd any questions? No, I, I'm very pleased, by the way, that we have, from the Republican Town Committee, we had three nominees, three wonderful nominees, so I applaud them for that, and, and, uh, you know, whichever ones don't get the seat, I hope we can find places for them, who, those people who want to volunteer in other places, because later on in the meeting, we're gonna go over all the openings in boards and other committees around town that could certainly use help, so.
Okay.
So thank you, Ms. Rudd, for stepping forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we have all. Uh, do I have somebody else? Ruth, are you still on the phone here?
I am.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm just gonna put you on mute for a second. Okay, so we have the three nominees that we, uh, now all interviewed here, so I would entertain Ms. Adams.
Did we interview Carol Kelly?
I think we did that last week. She was the only one of the three who was here last week, I believe.
Okay.
Is Ms. Kelly on the phone? There's another phone person. I don't know if, if she's on the phone or not, and she would like to say something. No, Lorraine was interviewed last week. Okay, so Ms. Kelly, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't, I'm, I'm, it was Ms. Rudd that we interviewed last week. So is Ms. Kelly available?
I think she wasn't available last week, so.
I know she wasn't, yes.
Telling me.
And she was the one, that was the Realtor who had a closing or something. Let me see if this is, uh, her here. Hold on a second. I have one other phone number. Uh, if your phone number, hello?
Hi, it's Carol Kelly. I wasn't here last week.
All right, now we're gonna have all three, so.
Yay!
Oh, uh, well, thank you for being able to join with us. I'm sorry that I couldn't tell by the phone number, so, uh, again, if you.
I was a little late.
That's okay. If you've heard what I've done with the other candidates, I'm gonna ask you to introduce yourself. Tell us a little about yourself and why you would like to be on the Board of Registars.
Sure. Um, Carol Kelly, I moved to Lunenburg in 2003. Um, I have a senior in high school right now. I volunteered at the school. I used to, um, be the Friday girl at the primary school with Denise Galloway, who is absolutely fantastic. Um, I love our little town. It reminds me of the town I grew up in, which was Sutton, Mass. Um, I've been a volunteer for the Girl Scouts as well. Uh, I try to do whatever I can. I coach the girls in soccer. Um, and I just want to help basically as well, um, with any, anything I can do for the town, for the vote. Um, I'll bring people in. I'll, I'll try to get, I was thinking even, you know, as having a, an 18-year-old, she just turned 18, uh, last Thursday, I'll get her involved in, in the vote as well. She will volunteer. I will get her friends to volunteer at, you know, Election Day. Um, I feel it's important for them to get started early, so, uh, and that's what I want to do, just help. And if I don't get this position, obviously, I would love to volunteer for anything I can in the town.
Thank you very much. I would again, open it up to the board if anybody has any questions for Ms. Kelly. I don't think we have any, so I, again, I want to thank you as the other candidates for stepping forward and offering to serve the town, and again, for the, for whoever doesn't get appointed, the other two applicants, please, we, we definitely could use help in lots of different areas in town, and hopefully we can work with you to find a, a fit.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we've interviewed, even tonight, all three people. Lorraine went twice. She had her, a dress rehearsal last week and a full rehearsal this week. So, uh, I would leave it to the board if anybody would like to, you know, start the discussion or make, uh, you know, make a nomination, however you want to proceed, but at the end of this, we need to appoint one person from the Republican Town Committee list. Ms. Adams?
Um, I would start by saying this is a very unusual situation to have, uh, three volunteers for one spot. We're usually begging, so I guess it just feels nice to have so much energy to want to participate, that it makes very, um, difficult, because we're so used to just saying thank you, because there was simply a vacancy. So it's definitely a different circumstance.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer.
He's muted.
Hold on a second.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Um, we're left with, with a tough choice, because we have three great volunteers here. Um, personally, uh, I'd like to nominate Ms. Anderson to continue in her service that she's, uh, given the town for so long, and, you know, and then in terms of our other volunteers, uh, both Ms. Rudd and, and Ms. Kelly both seem excellent. Um, so, uh, really, it's, to me, it's, it's kind of a flip of the coin. I, I think we're fortunate in this regard.
Uh, was that a motion?
I can make it a motion. I motion, uh, uh, that we nominate, uh, or that we appoint Ruth Anderson, uh, to the Board of Registars, and do I have a coin? I don't. Uh, and we appoint, uh, Ms. Lorraine Rudd to the Board of.
There's only one. There's only one position.
Oh, there's one. Then I, I nominate, uh, Ms. Anderson.
Okay. Uh, do I have a second before we can?
I would, I would second that and just say that, uh, that, um, I, I'm impressed with all the candidates. Um, Ruth, though, has been doing this for so many years. Um, I, I, I don't, I'd be remiss, I guess, if, if I didn't support her in this cause, and, and I'd like to thank the other two candidates for coming forward, and, and I don't want to dissuade them in any way in volunteering for any future positions, because I think they'd be very valuable. Um, so I do second, uh, Mr. Dwyer's motion.
Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, I think all three of you for stepping up as well. You know, I came into this discussion figuring that I would, I think all of you are, are, it sounds like you're very equally qualified, and, uh, that I would support whoever got nominated first. Um, I do think that, uh, Carol, that, you know, your engagement with young people, I think that's so important. Um, and so, I mean, I could see myself supporting all three of you guys, and, and, uh, and, you know, Ms. Anderson's years of service and to our town, and, uh, certainly want to thank all of you for being here tonight.
I will also say that I would echo what, uh, Ms. Adams said, that it's really, it's really quite refreshing to have more than one person applying for, uh, a, a position, and whatever energy surrounded the three of you coming forward, I hope we can capture that and, and spread that around, because we have lots of vacancies that we really need to fill, and hopefully, um, again, the two who don't get the position will look for those, and we'll be announcing those positions later on tonight, but it is nice to have. It does make it difficult, but it also is nice to see that there's people coming forward and new people who want to offer their, their volunteer time to the town. So any further discussion on the nomination? So the nomination is to appoint Ms. Anderson to the role of the Board of Registars from the, uh, Republican Town Committee list, and this will be a roll call vote. Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
And an aye for me. Again, I want to thank all three of you. Uh, Ms. Anderson, you know the, the drill. Uh, you have to go to the town clerk and get sworn in, and to the other two, please, I, I do hope you listen to the list of other vacancies, and I appreciate you coming forward, and I think you were, you and your energy and your ability to want to serve the town could be used in so many different capacities. Uh, let me unmute. ability to want to serve the town could be used in so many different capacities. Uh, let me unmute. I think it's, you're on.
Uh, yes, Ruth Anderson, uh, thank you for putting me in that position again. I appreciate it. And as far as the other two ladies, um, if they would be interested in working at the polls, we would really like to have them do that so that they can learn the ropes and find out how the process takes place. I will be giving them a call and see if they're available for the next election. Thank you.
That sounds perfect.
And Tom, there's a nice comment for Lorraine in the chat that the folks on the phone wouldn't be able to see.
Yeah, so Lorraine Rudd says, thank you very much. Ruth Anderson sounds superb and I'm glad she's continuing her role with all her experience. Keep me and Carol in mind for other volunteer positions. Uh, you can count on it, Lorraine. Uh, we will definitely do that. And as you heard from Ms. Anderson, she'll be contacting you about, uh, volunteering at the, the next elections as they come around. I, I, I think this town election is coming up in a couple of weeks, so. I don't know if that's gonna be as early or if they have those positions, but definitely would be next year. I don't think there's any fall elections this year and, because it's an odd number of years, so. So thank you both. Thank you to Ms. Rudd. Thank you to, to Ms. Kelly and thank you to Ruth. Okay, on to ratification of town managers. Oh, no, hold on a second. Seven thirty. First, we gotta go back to our appointment. We have a common victor or license hearing for four fifty-one Mass Ave. Uh, Yatim Central Convenience Lunenburg. I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that right, but I'm sure Mr. Yatim will tell me. I will ask him to unmute.
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so Man of Town Manager, do you want, can you introduce this?
So this is, um, for the set location on the agenda and everything is in order. All taxes paid up to date and all the paperwork has been submitted appropriately.
So for those who don't know, this is the golf station on the corner of, uh, Chase Road in Mass Ave, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is this a transfer or a, a new license?
It's a transfer.
Any changes in hours? Any changes in anything that was on the previous?
No, everything will stay the same as it is.
Okay. All right, we see that everything is in order as per the town manager and as what, all these certificates that we're seeing in the documentation that we have in front of us. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? The nun, and seeing this is fairly straightforward, I would entertain a motion in request, uh, for the common victor or license at four fifty-one Mass Ave for Yatim Central Convenience Lunenburg LLC.
I can.
I can.
Do I have a second? Yes, we have a second. Okay, any further discussion from anybody? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Adams.
Hi.
Mr. Dwyer.
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries.
Hi.
Mr. Marino.
Hi.
And an I for myself. You are all set. Uh, Man of Town Manager, when can he pick up the license?
Um, it will need to be signed off on, so Elaine will send something out to the, to the board tomorrow.
Oh, okay, we have to sign it first. Okay, so we'll be in touch in the next couple of days. You will have it.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate that and I'm happy to be in town. They will get to meet in person sometime. Once all this, uh, COVID issues is resolved and we can meet one another instead of Zoom.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I think we're all looking forward to seeing each other sometime soon, too.
Correct, correct.
But yes, thank you and good luck in your, in your new venture there.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Bye bye.
Okay, now we can go to, back to interviews, appointments, reappointments, resignations. We have the ratification of the town managers, appointments of the beach director Jen Nass and the following seasonal lifeguards. Isabel Winslow, Nicholas Coronella, Olivia Colstrom, Jared Bowser, Ethan Gangler, Liz Simeone, Paige Gangler, and Lynn Major. Adam Town Manager, it's all yours.
Yes, these appointments are being recommended to me by the Parks Commission. Um, and I'm asking for the ratification from the board tonight. Um, I would make a motion that we ratify the appointments of the beach director, um, Jen Nass and seasonal lifeguards as read.
I was hoping you were gonna say as read, by the way. I was, oh, boy.
You're welcome.
Uh, I don't know, uh, I see that we have the Park, uh, Park Commission on here, Park Commission on here. I don't know if they want to say anything or not. I'll let them raise their hand if they do. Otherwise, we will just go on with the motion. Okay, we will just go on with the motion. So we have a motion to approve them, uh, or ratify them as read. We have a second, so roll call. Ms. Adams.
Hi.
Mr. Dwyer.
Hi.
Mr. Marino.
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries.
Hi.
And an I for me. Let's have a, a fun, safe season on the beach this year. Actually, let's have a season on the beach this year, maybe even that gets the better start, so. Okay. Going on, current business, review of annual town meeting articles and any required follow-up. So I would open up this. Uh, I said my, what I was going to say under this, I said under public comments. Other than that, I, I wanted to thank the hundred and thirty plus people who were there. Uh, I think my public comments, uh, aside, I think the, the meeting was, was rather respectful. I, I'm glad that people stayed, people attended, people discussed their, their points of view. Uh, and we were able to get the town's business done in a, in a an organized way and I'm glad that people attended, even though it turned out to be a very beautiful day, which is usually a, not a good mark for town meeting attendance. So I appreciate everybody who did give up a beautiful Saturday to be there. Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, so a couple of, uh, just thoughts about how the meeting went. So overall, I think it was a really successful town meeting. Uh, you know, I called Heather, the town manager afterwards, excuse me, and really thanked her for, um, how well it was, uh, the, her presentation went, how clear all the information was, and also the lead up to getting to town meeting, just, uh, just the quality of information that I think we all had as we went into the decision-making process. Um, I am especially happy that the, uh, the, all the articles that were proposed, um, by the, um, by the board were approved. Uh, so that's, you know, with regard to the TCP design extra funny, funding, uh, the moving forward on the old primary school and also with the change to APDC. So I, I, I left the meeting, although it was long, I did leave the meeting feeling rather like it was a successful session. But I also wanted to just follow up on a, a comment that was said earlier when we were talking about, um, uh, the comment earlier by Mr. Birch, because, uh, you know, someone Adams had said something that just kind of struck me a little bit. You know, discomfort from my perspective does not mean that what is said can't be said. You know, as elected officials, our role is to be uncomfortable, to hear things that we may not agree with, to sort through them, uh, and to respect that in a democracy, you don't have to stop someone, um, you don't have to get someone to stop talking because you don't like what someone has to say or how you feel while they say it. So, you know, we are all subject to the criticisms of the public and each other in a public meeting. Uh, what we can do is verbally condemn those things that we don't like. We can encourage a certain mode of behavior. But election, elected officials do not have a right to comfort that supersedes the general public's right to speak. So, uh, but I think that overall, again, I think the meeting went well, but I'll have to agree to disagree uh, on that point. And, and certainly, while I agree with Mr. Birch, the comments were uncalled for, uh, and that they shouldn't, in my opinion, they should not have been said. I don't believe that it's an executive board's role to interrupt a legislative session that has a moderator.
Ms. Adams.
Sure, I would just respond to that in, in regards to what I was speaking of was, um, simply when somebody feels there's a personal attack. I don't feel like there's any room for crossing a line where something personal is being discussed. If it's meeting minutes, if it's general laws, if it's things that, um, you know, were, were generated from policy bylaws and whatnot, then if somebody feels uncomfortable, that's fine. You know, we may disagree on whether or not a warrant article should pass. My speaking at the beginning, um, was about when somebody maybe feels that something has become personal. I don't think there's room for that. And when I talked about being able to sense that, that happened at one of our meetings. Um, it was actually comments from yourself, so there's a great deal of irony here for me. There comes a point sometimes where if something is involving somebody's personal life or whether or not it's even true, that doesn't belong in these meetings. It doesn't belong in, in government. And so, um, I don't think there's a, a point of agreeing or disagreeing. I think that there's just no, no spot where somebody should feel that they're, they're, they're personally being questioned. We certainly put ourselves here to defend ideas, laws, circumstances and policies, but we certainly don't put ourselves here to be scrutinized, um, in regards to our, our personal lives.
Is going to be a back and forth, Mr. Jeffries?
No, I'm complete. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, I've, I've been told you're correct about four times so far in the last two years that I've, that, uh, you felt as if I said something personal. You know, I think that I, I disagree with you, but I think that we all as board members, part of the nature of a board is being able to say to one another, give each other some feedback um, about how our board works with each other, how effective we are working with each other, and to be able to be personal in the sense of it's directed and targeted at one another. You know, I don't, for, for, as a member of this board, I think that anything that I can do to help us work better together um, is helpful. And if that means that, you know, sometimes giving someone honest feedback, I think is, is to me a helpful part of a process. But, you know, again, I think that my comment was about, you know, the, us being discom- uncomfortable. People have the right to say things that make people uncomfortable. Um, and I think sometimes we have to just trust that everyone here has the same altruistic motives and that just something may come out a certain way, but our responsibility is to pause for a second to trust that what's being said has, is good intended, well-intended, and then to try to figure out the message that's, that's being relayed. But I, I do hear you, um, you know, and we all can agree to disagree.
Okay, well, I, I would say, I think that, like many things, what both of you are saying, it's, you know, the, the, the actual things fall somewhere in the middle. While I might agree that no one has a right to not feel uncomfortable, there are boundaries to meetings, whether it's this meeting, whether it's town meeting, uh, and so there are boundaries that uh, by the rules of the engagement of those places nee- needn't be crossed and not to, not to talk about the gray edges, but to talk about what the public commenter talked about. When somebody directly impugns somebody's motives without any fact except to just hurl an accusation, that is clearly beyond the bounds of what the meeting should be. Now, who should interrupt that? Well, that all depends upon who's running the meeting and it's important to be cognizant of who runs what meeting. So chairs run their own meetings, town meeting is run by the moderator, and so those are the people who can be pled to intercede, but nobody else could really intercede other than those people in those cases. So it is important to know. But in any regard, I think the direct accusation of people being corrupt, getting things for, you know, covert reasons and everything are always, always out of bounds, unless you have something to prove that that is true. If it's true, it's true, but if you better be able to prove it because that's quite the accusation to hurl at people and that's what I think the commenter was talking about, not the boundaries of, you know, you're attacking my personal position on something, but attacking somebody's personal position and attacking somebody personally are very different things. So it's important to know the nuances between them. Any other comments about town meeting or any of the articles that anybody here wants to address? Mr. Dwyer.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I, I guess, rather than, I, I hear all the comments and, and uh, I, I too feel that, uh, uh, sometimes that, uh, people can get out of bounds into the personal. But the overwhelming sense I had af- after town meeting on Saturday was, I was just really heartened by, um, the number of people who attended and, you know, made, stepped up and made comments and, and, you know, the overwhelming majority of the commenters were thoughtful, informed, and it really, uh, uh, was, was very, uh, nice to see, uh, how thoughtful and form, uh, uh, people were at town meeting, who, who came and participated.
And I, I absolutely concur. That was my overwhelming takeaway from the meeting is that everybody, nobody tried to talk over people. It was well ordered and people got to speak their minds and, you know, I, I do appreciate that and I, and I, I came away with the same notion, Mr. Dwyer. Okay. Let's go on to number two, report on the fiscal year twenty twenty-one town manager goals. So I'm gonna let the town manager talk about the review, the item. We have seen this document. Uh, we used it as a way to formulate some of our own town manager evaluations. So if you would like to review some of this without reading it in its entirety.
Uh, so goal number one, with the continuation of the goal to redevelop, reuse nine twenty-five Mass Ave, um, which was to work with town council and ta- the tax, finalize the foreclosure of the property once the full results of the environmental site assessment were known. So, um, I went into detail, but this goal is ongoing, um, and due to information over the year, um, we weren't at a point to foreclose on the property, obviously had to get to a certain point where the liabilities of the property were known. And due to a recent meeting I had with Mass DEP and our environmental site assessment consultant, um, new information was received that there may be funding through the LUS program from DEP that they would remove the tanks and that would be directly with the owner of the property instead of the town having to take the property and, um, then uh, look for funding from Mastee, uh, Mast Development to remove the tanks. So I'm still working. I actually had correspondence today with, uh, Mast DEP and our consultant, consultant, there's something they have to go out to the property tomorrow. Um, so this is ongoing. That action item. Um, regards to action two under that goal was if the results of the, um, environmental site assessment indicate cleanup costs are necessary, the town manager will work with Mast Development on funding mechanisms available to clean up the property in order to get the property back on the tax rolls and use for another viable use. So again, um, I applied for funding in the fall through Mast Development and, um, that was, um, for their brownfields redevelopment funding. We weren't at, uh, stage in the, the process where um, we were eligible for that funding. Um, but like I said, uh, for the previous action, this new development of available funding from Mast DEP is actually a preferable um, remedy for that situation and not Mast Development funding, which is a highly competitive grant process where they, um, receive over a hundred applications and maybe, um, a handful get funded. The third action on, under that goal was to work with relevant staff, town communities and boards to explore whether auctioning the property or putting out an RFP for reuse of the property will address the future reuse of the property. I met with the planning board on March twenty-second, presented them the information, um, that had been, um, the actions that had been taken to that date, um, looking for their input, their, um, they were going to get back to me at a later date and discuss it at a future meeting. Uh, so I'll do the same with APDC at a future date.
I was gonna ask if that was part of the, is that part of the village district, that property? Does it go out there? Okay. Ms. Adams, you had a question?
Um, some of it was just covered. I raised my hand earlier. The environmental, um, process obviously has taken a long time and it's chipped away and it's a very good thing. There were, I think it was three or so years ago and you probably remember there's a lot of people asking like on discussing Lunenburg, what are we gonna do about that gas station? And so it, if it's taken this much, um, effort with all of the resources we have as a town and you have as a town, I think it would have been a hurdle that would be very hard for anybody to have accomplished. Um, and so we're heading in a good direction. And so as, as all the environmental things move forward, what you just mentioned is understanding the architectural preservation. I'm actually into the post office.
Um, I actually went to the post office today, so I stood for about ten minutes and looked at the property from up above. It's a very complicated piece of property, because behind the building, there's a a extreme drop off to what looks like wetlands associated with Marshall Palm. So I guess as we continue to, you know, brainstorm about the property, if we do take it over and what its future use could be with um parking restrictions and historical preservation restrictions, start to piece together what other hurdles it will have and and help formulate what the easiest solution to reuse would be, because the environmental aspects, I feel like is is just one of the the problems placing that facing that site. So um kind of be if we get prepared for for what else is in store.
I want to say that, uh, you know, little did, well, maybe to the layperson, I mean, I many of us probably knew that we were handing you some knotted ball of tangled string and asking you to untangle it because but for the laypeople who say, we know this property has been vacant for how long now? And, you know, why is it taking this long? Well, because of the dangerous and hazardous materials that were stored there with gasoline and petroleum products and the the possibility of of uh, you know, contamination and all the liability that comes with that. This has been a very difficult course without spending outright just lots of money. So I really applaud the fact that, you know, piece by piece with little with a bobby pin and picking out the string, you're able to straighten this out and was we're so close to the end of this. So I really thank you for all the work that's taken getting this far with basically every single branch of government from the D P to Brownfield to this. You know, it really is an incredible feat to to undo this, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. Uh, just another piece on that, too. Um, we are proceeding with a survey on that property, so that piece is done. So when we're at the point of taking the property, that will be taken care of as well. Goal number two, to enhance facilities management and maintenance, to look at the feasibility of creating an independent facilities department and improve the long term maintenance and repair plan for town facilities. The action number one was to review the current organizational structure and determine uh reorganization that separates facilities from the D P W would create greater efficiencies and follow the process in the town charter for any required work reorganization. So this is ongoing. I've had a number of conversations with the D P W director as that would affect the D P W and that separation. Um, I've also spoken with the school superintendent about a possible shared uh type position. Uh, so uh, this is an ongoing a matter that I um would like to continue as a goal going into the next fiscal year. Um, right, and as I added in this, um, our top priority was getting additional staff uh for that department, because we're show uh, we have one member currently that's running um the facilities department for nine town buildings, which is unachievable. So um with the town meeting vote and additional funding for staff, that's a step in the right direction, and the next step would be to look at um the reorganization. The action number two under that goal was to work with the D P W to look into utilizing other modules offered by our current maintenance management software, different maintenance management software for preventative maintenance schedules and tracking the management of town assets. Uh, so this goal is complete or reported at the last select boards meeting that the D P W director has selected. He made um and is proceeding with that, and that is being funded through a grant through our insurance carrier for the first year's annual cost.
Any questions about this goal?
I have any questions, but I have a comment.
A comment about this goal?
Yeah, I think that uh he maintains an excellent system. So uh, I think that that will work very well to meet the town's needs, and it's exciting that it was paid for through a grant. So uh, I know it wasn't cheap, so that's great.
Thank you. Okay, goal number three.
Uh, goal number three is succession planning, and the objective was to identify strengths and weaknesses when within the organization that will inform town management on long term strategies to fill key positions. Action one was to develop a working group of managers and mid managers to identify the key critical positions, assess bench strength of current personnel, training opportunities for existing personnel to develop their skills and positions that do not have a backup. Um, there, this is an ongoing goal as well. Um, we, a big piece of this goal is being accomplished through the continuity of operations plan that we I received the community compact grant for and UMass Collin Center. Uh, we've been working with them over the last year, all the departments. Um, a lot of time and effort on behalf of all the department heads, other staff, and informing this plan, which I expect to have uh within the next uh few weeks, a draft, and be complete by the end of this fiscal year. Um, so this will identify strengths, weaknesses, key personnel backups, all that information. Um, that leads into the action number two, complete the continuity of operations plan that will be a written document that identifies this key personnel and their backups functions to provide continuity of uh continuing services during emergencies. And action three was identify identify outside resources and recruitment strategies to use when internal candidates do not exist for key positions as a long term planning tool for addressing the lack of qualified individuals municipal experience. Um, this is an ongoing one as well. Uh, there are certain uh departments that get um uh, there are recruits from different programs, uh similar to the police and fire departments. Um, but there's other um departments that due to a decline in people going into municipal government and having that that experience uh that is uh especially municipal accounting is its own animal versus um regular accounting, that it would be nice to um look into a possible internship program with our local community colleges and see if we could develop something like the police and fire have at the uh the community college level as well.
Anybody have any questions about this goal? This is, I this is a really important one. I'm glad you made the progress you did, and I realized with the pandemic and everything because of that, you know, obviously that took a lot of your time. Uh, hopefully, as things knock on wood, eh ease up a bit, we'll be able to concentrate on this, because I really think this is something that, you know, many corporations don't even have. We really need to have this document to know what happens and how do we replace things. It really also works good for org charts and job descriptions and all meshes together, so really important document.
I I agree. Uh, I I actually attended training at UMass Collin Center in the area of succession planning. They have a very good module uh that might be useful to you if you already, if you haven't already contained it. Um, yeah, good job with that. That's important.
It will also um inform our facilities needs, this the continuity of operate of operations plan as well as uh information technology.
I think in the la, you know, if I had a overarching view over the last ten years, I think we've done probably, uh, probably since the last last recession of two thousand eight. We really, we 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 really cut back at during those fiscal times. I think we've really done a good job of trying to grow things back to where they should have been for many years, and we really worked shorthanded in so many areas. And, you know, the financial conditions being what they have been, uh thankfully, in the last, you know, ten years, we've been able to really make progress, and I think we're really getting close to being, you know, what optimum numbers are for to address these things, because they're all important. It's just that in times of uh n- negative financial uh environments, you have to make really tough cuts and sometimes substantial cuts. So I'm hoping we're not facing that anytime soon and we're able to address this going forward. Any other comments about town managers' goal status update? Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
So we go on to the review of the composite town manager performance evaluation. So this is uh i- in recent years, this has been a two step process. Uh, number one is the introduction of this composite document, so that now it is public record. Uh, and of course, because this is the first time it's public record, nobody on the board has seen this before today. So therefore, I don't necessarily expect you to want to review it, but we have a week to do it where we can discuss it next week. Anybody between now and then can make any recommended changes if you think something is inaccurate here. During this same time for this week, the board members can look at the, now that theirs are all completed, we've all completed our individual ones, we can, in order to evaluate the composite, to see if it really reflects the uh the views of the entire board, you have the ability to go and look at the confidential documents at the town hall. They're they're printed out there, and they can't be taken out, they can't be sent in digital form, but you can read them there if you want in the next week, just to, you know, make sure for yourself that my composite reflects the views of everybody in the board. So I don't know, I don't remember last year if I read this on the first night, and then we discussed it, or we just introduced it, and then we read the whole thing and on the second meeting.
We read it the second meeting.
Okay. Ms. Adams?
Um, I just wanted to say, I scanned through it, and I just wanted to say thank you for putting it together. Um, over the past two years, this, we've worked on this process and just looking through it, um the length of it, having the um the rating done as both a number and then as a um, you know, a written evaluation. Um, it it looks like it's um very well put together, and so thank you for, and I'm sure that takes a lot of time to go through all five and to consolidate it and create something meaningful. So thank you.
Thank you for that, and and I hope everybody feels the same. I it it does take time, and some people got me up against the deadline to get it through in time. Uh, and then I also had just, this has nothing to do with the process, but you try to include try to include instructions, and uh it was interesting, because you could rate unnumerically zero to four. And yet, for the first time ever, somebody started doing fractional things, so they 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 put, and I thought that was, uh, it's not part of the instructions. It was intended to use a nume, you know, a digit, an integer between zero and four. So that became interesting to do the math on on those, but uh that that that's just a math problem, so luckily that went fine.
That's how we have the three point.
I do, I do thank everybody for getting it in on time, so we could do ours on time, because last year, because of the pandemic, it ran way over, and so we had this discussion. Uh, and things were changing by the moment last year at this time. So we actually had the final review with some members who were newly elected, and some members who were part of the board weren't part of the review, and that was unfortunate. So this year, I think we're gonna get the proper proper format, the right timing. And anybody who thinks anything should be changed, please do not email the board. Just email to me that you, what your argument is about why something should be changed, and I will review it, and I will probably wind up calling you just to discuss it. And uh, you know, I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with what the final evaluation was. So that will be reviewed next week then. Uh, number four, report on the fiscal year twenty twenty one select board goals. That is also in our also in our Google Drive. So we had three objectives. Uh, and I would say that well, as one point of view, I don't think we did as well as the town manager did on her goals. Let's put it that way. But but we didn't, we did do okay on objective number one, which was to identify, define and propose at least one project to the twenty twenty one annual town meeting regarding the use and or reuse of the old primary school building and or the land on which it sits. We, action one was having open session with other boards, committees and commissions. What we kind of did that, we didn't do it as thoroughly, because we didn't really formulate an idea, and I think we wanted to formulate ideas, although we did something that wasn't on there, which was uh, we did do that survey at town, last year's town meeting, that I think gave us, you know, a clear guidance of what town meeting voters were looking to do. And I think that was even referenced on Saturday's town meeting, that that it became clear what what the majority of people wanted to do, uh, which is the town green idea. Um, as far as action number two, which was review the existing document and information, engage professionals to create such documents. I think that's what the town meeting article was about, so we'll be able to do that uh to provide accurate assessment and the cost of uh doing, you know, basically completing the vision that we had that was described at town meeting. So we did complete or in the middle of engaging somebody to complete number two. Uh, and then number three, hopefully from that, we're gonna go back to action number one, and once we get a design, we'll go back to other boards in the town at large, hold hold a if not an official public hearing, we'll hold several public hearings like on these these meetings or maybe special meetings to go over what the plans might be. And then hopefully we'll get to number, action number three in an upcoming town meeting, whether it's fall or annual, to actually present an actual construction plan. Uh, that is the goal. So we got some of this done, not all of it, and not in the, not necessarily in the order given. Any questions, comments on that, that I that I characterize it correctly?
I don't know if we should ask Heather to rate us.
Yeah, I I was funny that you mentioned that, because I was gonna say at the bottom of this, I was gonna wait for the composite town board of so the select board evaluation, yes.
Before we finalize her, she could criticize us.
It's only fair, I guess, right?
Right. When I met with Heather, I, in fact, I started off, I think, the first ten minutes, fifteen, by asking her to rate rate me. So I think it's important to hear the back feedback, um, hear the feedback from uh employees that report to us, so.
Sure. Uh, objective number two, we got we got that number one. Uh, and we started writing. This was to review, discuss and revise where needed the reappointment appointment process of all annual select board appointments and to formalize that process into a policy for distribution. So we got for far down the line of doing a first draft um and writing a draft policy. And then that's where there were some disagreements, I think. I mean, I guess we're gonna find out when we make our own goals this year, whether this will continue or not, because I think there was, that's why it 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 basically stopped, because I think there was a discrepancy of whether people think we should have been going forward with this or not. And maybe we just need to discuss and reevaluate that. If we do go back to it, we do have a starting place, because everybody did submit what their thoughts are. We can also resubmit them if there was a renewed perspective or misunderstanding from one or all of our members about what we were looking to do. But it would be nice to, you know, wrap it up in a bow and say, okay, this is the process, so nobody is i- in the dark, not only us, but also all the bodies that we appoint and their chairs, so that everybody is clear on what's expected. And number three, I would say we did, I don't even know that we discussed much, which was to analyze, discuss and strategize how to get more people actively interested and involved in volunteering for the town for elected and appointed position. So I I know this is something that all of us have at one time or another this year, sometimes in many years, spoken to, spoken about. But we did not really take, get far in this, if at all, to be very honest. I don't know if anybody has any added comments, narratives. Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's hard, um, you know, I I I think it's hard to find a way to get people to be more engaged. Um, because I think the first step is to educate. A lot of people just don't have any idea as to how town government works. Um, you know, I'm not saying that there's not a core group of people who follow and pay attention, but uh, it's, it feels a lot of the time when I talk to other people who live in town or people in general, that a lot of people, they just don't, they have no idea. that a lot of people, they just don't, they have no idea how local governments are organized, how they're designed to work, how they're supposed to work. And I don't know how the, what the best thing is to push that process other than continuing to talk to the people that we know and encourage them, you know, educate in some kind of ways and hopefully, um, you know, the schools will with the new curriculum requirements, I went to school community being I mentioned a while ago and made a public comment there about the importance of teaching kids about how local governments work, that if we start doing that, that maybe that will help uh, promote a civic awareness, curiosity and partnerships with, with the schools, with children, you know, if kids are doing a project, their parents typically are gonna know what's going on and and sometimes you get the kid educating the parent, uh, when that kid's volunteering uh, time in in town offices. But I don't know if with all the things on the plate, I would not encourage this to remain a goal as going to the next year.
Okay, I think, by the way, just inadvertently, I know you didn't intend this, but I think we talked more about this goal just now by your statement than we did all the rest of the year. My comment was about discussing our goals and our ability to achieve them, but not discuss the content. You know, again, what you just described is, is, is actually uh, an action in action one was to discuss what the obstacles would be. Mr. Marino?
Yeah, I, this, you know, this would have been a tough goal to achieve this, this past thirteen months anyway because um, you know, the, the COVID issues, um, you know, we can't really meet in public. I, I, you know, I look at this goal and it's the first thing that comes to mind is we should do is get all the committees together, at least the volunteers from some of the committees together and create some kind of a uh, job fair, you know, if you would. Um, and you know, try to get people in and talk about the various committees and and boards and so forth and see if we can kinda garner some interest in that way. But in the past year, that would have been very difficult to do because doing it uh, virtually just wouldn't work. So just, just a thought and just to maybe give us more.
I tend, I tend to have the same, I tend to have the same opinion. I mean, I think there's a reason why we didn't address this. Not only because what you just said, which I believe is true, also because all the other things that had become before us trying to keep in, you know, ahead of the pandemic. Use our time. It's not like we weren't meeting. It's not like we were taking extra Tuesdays off. So for all those reasons, I I do concur. I do concur with you.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm stunned and I feel like I'm defending us, but I really am. I think in our defense that that would have been a hard one to attain. But I think going forward, if, you know, we get to a point where we don't have to mask up and we can meet in public. You know, something like a job fair, uh, would try to get everybody involved. I see Pete's on here. Uh, Pete would be a good one to have, you know, to talk about the finance committee, for example, um, maybe get people interested in that board. You know, I think we should think about that maybe going forward when things are loosened up a little bit.
I agree. Ms. Adams?
Uh, sure. I think, uh, although we may not have met this objective, I feel like I saw a lot of really, um, good citizen activism. Or, you know, people from other boards and committees, um, there was a, uh, a lot, um, not just on Facebook, but even at town meetings, sort of, there was some facetious shout outs to, uh, hey, you there with your comment, join a committee and, you know, they were listed and, and so I feel like it's, it it's risen to the top. Um, in terms of being a topic, we're always aware of it, always talking about it. We did it, we verbalized it tonight. Um, during the, um, the Board of Registars. So even though we didn't, you know, specifically draw attention to the objective, I will say between, um, you know, uh, on, on Facebook, you know, very much, um, I don't, don't know the name of the group or whether or not people are in it. Um, Chris Menard has done a lot of work to advertise vacancies and a lot of times in sort of, you know, a fun, optimistic way. Obviously, not everything available is exciting, but to those of us who do it, we, I think it takes a certain type of, um, it's almost like a hobby. I think we all have town government. Um, I, I don't know if the right word is, is to be a nerd or what, whatnot. I self-proclaim myself as one, but it's not for everybody, but you can kinda have fun looking for extra people. And I do feel like I've seen that happening, um, more so this past year than in other years. So even if we didn't achieve it, I feel like it's, it's still happening.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chair. If I recall, I think it was back in August, maybe September, we had one meeting where at the end of the meeting, we went through the open, uh, uh, you know, opportunities to volunteer and there were only like one or two uh, vacancies. And I think it was the fewest vacancies we ever had and, and I blame the moderator or the chair for actually stating at that time that it was the fewest vacancies we've ever had. And since then, we've had, it seems like a, a slew of people who have just got done with their volunteering and and decided to to step down for whatever reason. But, uh, I, I, I tend to agree with my colleagues. I think we can all do a little bit there this year. And this was kind of a unique year in terms of uh, how, um, you know, with the pandemic and everything is, everything else, our ability to get out and talk to people and and encourage them to volunteer. So, so that's my two cents.
Well, after this meeting, I'm jumping in my DeLorean going eighty-eight and I'm gonna take back that statement on that meeting. Okay. Any other comments or anything else on the select board goals?
Yeah, how's that beef still coming, Tony?
Fantastic.
Now that's a goal we can all get behind. All right, review list of appointment vacancies and requests for reappointment forms. So that, let's go over that. Annual appointments. I will briefly go over the vacancies list. Okay, first, the standing committees. We have on the Architectural Preservation District Commission, terms to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. We have one resident representative and we have one member that has to be from the Historical Commission. On the Agricultural Commission, we have one opening term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. On the Conservation Commission, terms to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, we have two openings. Uh, Council on Aging, uh, we have three openings, terms to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Cultural Council, uh, we have three openings, terms to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Really? They have three openings even with the people we just recently appointed? Wow, they were really down. Okay. Uh, there's so many artists and and and, you know, artistic and cultural people in this town. I hope we can get those filled. Uh, on the Historical Commission, we have two openings, terms to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Public Access Cable Committee, three openings, all terms to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Senior Citizen Property Taxation Work Off Program, one member at large, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. And Zoning Board of Appeals, two openings, terms to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. And One Zoning Board of Appeal Associate Member, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. On ad hoc committees, we have one member at large for the TCP Building Design Committee. And we have four vacancies on the Bylaw Review Committee.
That has changed to two. The moderator appointed two people after town meeting.
Okay, that's excellent. So two, two vacancies for the Bylaw Review Committee. And then other appointments, so Housing Authority, they have one vacancy for a term that runs through twenty twenty four. And another vacancy, which would be a five-year term. So that would expire in twenty twenty six if my math is correct. Town Clockwinders, that's, that's really more of a task appointment to do a task and then those terms expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. It says unlimited openings. If anybody's interested, I think we try to limit it to six because you only get it to do, every member gets to do it twice a year, winding the clock. I guess we could potentially get it up to twelve, where everybody do it once. But it is a little bit technical, so you want people to do it a couple of times a year so they don't forget. And Constables Unlimited, and those terms expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. So those are all the vacancies or all the, the positions up for appointment by the end of June. And we will be appointing them in June sometime. Uh, does the board want me to read the people who are looking to be reappointed to these committees or no?
Uh, I don't think so.
If it could be useful just to say of what you just read, particularly the standing committees uh, of the openings, how many people are up for reappointment?
Sure. So on the Agricultural Commission, which has one opening, uh, there is a person re- seeking reappointment. On the Conservation Commission, there's two openings, only one person is seeking reappointment. And so there's one that's non-contended right now. Council on Aging has three openings and all people are seeking reappointment. Cultural Council, which has, um, three openings and one person is seeking reappointment. Historical Commission has two openings and both members are seeking reappointment. Public Access Cable has three openings and all three are seeking reappointment. zoning Board of Appeals has two openings, both are seeking, both members are seeking reappointment, but the associate member is, uh, has a vacancy. Nobody is, that is open. Nobody's contending for that. The Clockwinders, all six people are seeking reappointments. But again, that's an unlimited board or group, I should say. And of the Constables, which is also unlimited, we have one member seeking reappointment. So if you are interested in any of those positions and, uh, want to look to serve in any of those positions, again, on behalf of the board, I think we would all full-heartedly ask you to, uh, submit a an errantly called Talent Bank Form, which hopefully this year we will rename to the Public Service Interest Form or whatever we've decided in the past. I know we decided on a name and it wasn't Talent Bank. Uh, so please fill out a form and let us know that you're interested in these. One thing, well, okay, these are ones, I was gonna say, there's another one, that is not a, a selectment appointment, but I'm gonna mention this because it's an important committee. And that is Finance Committee. Finance Committee is appointed by a, a special subcommittee made up of one member of the school committee, one member of the Board of Selectmen and the town moderator. There are several people retiring from that board. I think two were mentioned at town meeting. And I don't know if anybody else is leaving. So again, there are vacancies for the FinCom. So if anybody is interested, again, please fill out your form for that. I mean, FinCom is a fascinating, I've served for several years before I joined the board on that. It's a fascinating way to know about town finances. You really get a good working of how the town is structured. And, uh, and it's interesting work and you get to meet all the departments. So. Any comments on appointment vacancies?
Committee that's looking, uh, for membership is the Economic Development Committee. They're looking, uh, one person recommended by the Open Space Committee, one citizen at large and one ex officio, that's a business owner.
Okay. And those are appointed by us, right?
No.
Who are they? Is that, who, who does the member at large?
Planning Board.
Oh, okay, okay, good. All right. So thank you. So for the planning people. Again, that's the Economic Development Committee. Okay, we have no minutes to be approved this week. Uh, warrants. I signed warrants last week. Accounts payable warrant in the amount of four hundred eighty thousand, six hundred twelve dollars and eighty-one cents. Avoid payroll warrant in the amount of negative eleven hundred dollars. And accounts payable warrant in the amount of three thousand eighty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. A payroll warrant in the amount of eight hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred eighteen dollars and three cents. And a payroll deduction warrant in the amount of two hundred sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy cents. Any action items from anybody? Ms. Adams?
Um, mine is more in the form of a question in regards to our meetings. They go out on cable and then I know people can log into Facebook and they could also call in or log into the actual Zoom meeting. Are they no longer available live on YouTube?
I think there was, uh, we'll have to pose this question to PAC. There was a problem with, with the live feeds to YouTube somehow that kept, they, they kept interrupting our service to that. So we can, now, town manager, can we ask PAC for, uh, if that has been resolved or is, is it no longer going to be live on YouTube?
Can follow up on that?
Thank you. Cause I know not everybody's on Facebook and not everybody has cable. I actually, you know, know a large pocket of people that I feel like YouTube, um, just going on the internet, it's like a really accessible place to receive the meeting. I used to watch them from there. Now, I mean, that's when they were actually, um, in, in the facilities, in the buildings now. You just pop on the Zoom on the laptop, but nonetheless, I found that was an easy way to access and a little easier for me than Facebook. So if there's a way to bring that back in or to, to figure out, um, if that's usable again, I think that would, um.
We can ask, sure. Uh, talking about Zoom meetings and live meetings, I guess I'll bring it up in action items. I mean, it is my intention, but I mean, to at least suggest to this board that we get back to, as things open up, as we get back to live meetings at town hall. Uh, one of the things I would propose is possibly the, our last meeting in May, which would be the, the eighteenth. Uh, I don't know how people feel about doing that and we would have to meet under whatever the capacity guidance is from the state, given the room size and everything. So we may be there in person, but everybody else may need to log in via Zoom again. Because of the requirements, but I just wanna see how members felt themselves about meeting in person.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Mr. Marino in favor?
Uh, is that with masks or?
Well, we, uh, again, we're gonna follow whatever the prescribed rule is and if, if the, the rule is inside, we'd have masks, then we would have masks.
Yeah, I have mixed feelings about that. It's particularly where there's, you can't have anybody in attendance. We're gonna be, what are we gonna be looking at computer screens, uh, still or?
Well, we, we'll be filmed live. I mean, we're gonna have to do a run through. We haven't done a mixed meeting with PAC, so we'd have to work with them to see, we would be live in one live shot and then other people, we'd have to be able to see the people on Zoom and they'd have to be able to see us. So, you know, there's probably logistics and technical hurdles we have to, you know, resolve.
Yeah. Not in favor of it?
Ms. Adams?
Um, I think a couple of things. One, if we were there, um, I definitely would wanna see that we do open up, um, town hall. I don't know how we'd handle capacity. You know, I know stores have somebody that, that checks. I don't know if there could be a volunteer or somebody that if we say, okay, our capacity in that building would be twenty guests or something. I think if we're there, the biggest advantage to being there would be that people would be able to come in person if that was a more accessible way for them to communicate. Um, you know, we've seen, um, you know, with, with sometimes people calling in by phone or not being able to use Zoom, opening up another avenue to access an open meeting. I would hope that we can find a way to, um, have an audience. I know that's typically like one to three people, unless there's an issue that brings a crowd and we'd have to have a plan to be prepared for that to comply. But I would like to see if we are there to not simply just be broadcasting to people's homes, but to be able to allow people to come in and view the meeting and set it up with, you know, whatever protocols and distancing were necessary. Um, and I said this last time we talked about it, I certainly would, would welcome being back in person. I think it's, it's a, a nice step forward. But I also. But I also enjoy um, being able to see each other's expressions and faces and I, I think that's probably nice for the people watching at home. There's a lot of um, lost um, lost communication in masks and so although there's advantages to getting back together again, I also, for the sake of broadcasting and whatnot, it is nice to be able to communicate um, with our, with our whole face, so I have mixed feelings depending upon um, could we be socially distanced and filmed without masks if that's not possible? I think this format um, has served us fairly well and so um, I, I would be open to any of the above, but definitely wanna see, you know, what, what benefits we have by, by going back in person, particularly if we don't allow people in.
Well, I'll work with the town manager and we'll tell everybody what the, the again, we were gonna follow the guidance as we have from the beginning of our local board of health, the mass board of health and the governor's guidelines. And you know, I'm not necessarily, I'm not gonna willing to buck those, if somebody wants to change them, that's fine, but uh, but given those restraints, we'll know at any one point what their, what the parameters would be to meet indoors, I know like right now, man and town manager isn't the capacity of that room, like eleven.
Eleven.
So there would be six of us already, just with the five of us and the town manager, there'd be two people in PAC, that'd be two. So we're already at seven, not eight, and so it would be three people could be there, I guess. And yet at least who's gonna be there, so.
And as far as um, the space itself, I asked uh, the executive assistant to look at um, six foot spacing with the board, so the we couldn't utilize the stage because it's not long enough um, to have all the members on the stage, would have to be on the floor and that one long main table, we'd have to add tables on either end in order to achieve the appropriate spacing.
And then if we're co-meeting with another group, like, you know, oh, we're gonna meet with the conservation commission, while putting the groups together, we immediately exceed capacity, so I don't know if there's an advantage to changing until we're able to uh, bring some normalcy to it, um, there's a lot lost in the Zoom world we've all been trapped in, but it, it does work. Um, and, and that's, I guess, what I'd wanna look at is, is what advantage do we bring by going back in if we can't welcome people to the meetings and then we add new um, new complications, like how to film us while we're distanced, whether or not we're in masks, and so a, a part of me um, just have mixed feelings, just like what, what will bring the best outcome and, and what'll bring the best communication to the people trying to view, I guess would be my, my main concern.
Well, I bring it up now because before now it was impossible to even consider, now it becomes possible. And when we do it, it's gonna be the decision of this board and every other board will make their own decision, Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, I mean, I, I wanna kind of I, I would agree with uh, Mr. Marino and, and Ms. Adams on their points that they made tonight, you know, I mean, I think that the image of coming back together is just that of coming back together, you know, I'm not a scientist, I, I, I trust a lot of the data and information that's being uh, given to us and I trust the CDC's guidance, but I personally don't understand how we have children three feet away from each other, unvaccinated, but we have adults six feet away from each other with masks vaccinated. I mean, at some point, I think we have, you know, the norm, to me, meeting again means that we're in a room uh, as we were pre, pre-pandemic and that we pick up where we left off. And I mean, until we're at that point, I'm probably not gonna be in favor of us meeting up, because it just seems like we're gonna be going to a place to do what we're already doing at home.
Okay. All right, that's good, so everybody has shared their opinions and I think we'll just we'll keep the parameters known to everybody and at some point we'll just revisit this occasionally as, as things change, as they seem to be changing kind of rapidly uh, in places and I've looked at the last Massachusetts numbers and the numbers are dropping precipitously and that's excellent. So, you know, so maybe, maybe you're right, maybe we wait until we can do it fully as before, so. All right, thank you for all for your input on that. Any committee reports?
Uh, yes. Uh, I reached out to the planning board, uh, the land use director and the planning board chair. Uh, and they gave me a number of comments to highlight tonight. Uh, first, um, the board is in the process of reviewing a six lot subdivision at one-on-one Pleasant Street. Uh, that proposal's for an eight hundred and fifty foot road and six duplex units. Uh, they've opened a hearing and will be continuing uh, the review of this project over the next month or two. Um. The board's review of the reconstruction project at North End Subaru continues. Uh, this project will see a complete rebuild of the dealership and service center as well as uh, significant site improvements. The board approved two minor modifications to the Baker Book Brook Apartment Com uh, project. Uh, the first is a realignment, realignment of the fire lane at the rear of the new building and the second was placement of a gazebo um, on the open space parcel. This project has twenty senior apartments and they're uh, finalizing construction and will be opening soon. The Bright Farms project has submitted a series of potent alterations to their approved project. The board requested they file a modification to their site plan due to the nature of the changes, the, the changes involved, um, uh, they're looking to mend the, the base floor elevation of the building and, and associated facilities uh, because uh, bedrock on site was, was much higher um, than anticipated, so uh, they, they raised it so they didn't have to take out as much rock. Uh, and finally, um, they're gonna be, the planning board's gonna be working on a request for proposal for master plan services and they intend to hire an outside contractor to develop um, a town services and facilities element and a land use element. Um, they're hoping to issue this RFP in, in early to mid-June. You know, uh, and I, they indicated that the RFP responses will most likely be due in, in thirty days. Uh, they'd anticipate, you know, issuing a, a notice to proceed, you know, sixteen to ninety days after, after that and hopefully completion of, of this work would be done in about a six to nine month timeframe.
Excellent, thank you very much. Any other committee reports? Noel Business Town Manager report in COVID nineteen updates.
Thank you, um, I'll skip over the vacancies since it's already been done. Primary school fire alarm, I was notified at the end of the last week that the school facilities director received a proposal from a company on the statewide contract list for an upgrade to the primary fire alarm system. And the original estimate for this project was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars and this proposal came in at approximately sixty-two thousand dollars. Given this new information, the recommendation by the superintendent will be to proceed with this work this fiscal year, utilizing the twenty-five thousand dollar earmark and the remainder from an anticipated surplus in the fiscal twenty-one school budget.
This was the, this was the item that the facilities director of the schools came to the capital plan with later in the, okay, thank you.
Welcome. Complete streets update, the DPW director and I had a pre-construction meeting last Wednesday and um, the project will begin around the end of May to the beginning of June. And they will save the last portion of the project, the intersection at Oak Ave and Main Street until after school is out, uh, so it doesn't interfere with school buses and school traffic. Let's skip over the department head updates and see about the last, um, town hall chimney. Due to the wind event on Friday, April thirtieth, the top portion of the town hall chimney on the side closest to the village building collapsed. The DPW closed that section of the driveway off until Monday, when the fire department was able to assist with getting up on the roof to remove any remaining bricks and check for any other loose bricks. Um, which they were, if you look at the two pictures, um, the first being from Saturday morning, I stopped by the building before uh, going to the middle school, high school. And the second was after um, the fire department um, and facilities were up there um, to remove all the loose bricks. So we've contacted our insurance company and will proceed accordingly once it has been inspected. So as you'll recall, uh, the chimney as well as the roof and other building envelope work was one of the capital projects on the fiscal twenty-two capital plan that was just approved at the, in the old town meeting. And for department head updates, public access has been filming the water district meetings and those meetings been, have been highly viewed more than other public meetings. Public access will be filming the Memorial Day ceremony on May thirty-first. Currently, a position for a video, a senior videographer position is being advertised and interviews will take place shortly. PAC will be testing out the equipment to run hybrid meetings again, uh, they've done this previously. Um, but they'll be testing it out again to ensure that we're ready when in-person meetings resume. From the police department, currently there are two officers in the full-time academy and they will be complete by late September, early October, provided there are no delays due to COVID. The second fiscal twenty-one cruiser uh, that was on the capital plan is expected to be on the road in approximately one month. Officers will receive training on the body worn cameras the week of May seventeenth. The two new reserve officers are currently in uh, FTO training. Sergeant Matthew has stepped down from the sergeant positions due to personal reasons and will return to the patrolman position. And eligible candidates will be identified and the position will be filled in the upcoming months. The chief recently applied for a grant to purchase training equipment for active shooter training. Uh, there was actually a training today, it was um, empathetics training and um, I attended that, uh, that was for all the, uh, it was split up into two days, one in today, one tomorrow, for effective leadership through emotional intelligence, I found it um, very valuable information come out of that, very useful, looking forward to talking to uh, the chief and uh, input from the officers that attend the training. From the council on aging, the council on aging is now open to seniors for walk-in visits from eight AM until five PM, Monday through Thursday and eight AM until four PM on Friday. Lunches at the center will be reintroduced with all safety protocols in place, as well as the use of the pool table and bingo, which has a ten person limit. The drive-through events will be reduced to once a month, starting in July. The facilities director and IT network administrator are assisting with making improvements to the large function room. And that include acoustic panels for the walls and Roman shades for the windows that will help with noise vibration. Um, so there were pictures also in your report, uh, or a picture showing the panels. And there will be overhead projector installed in fiscal twenty-two that will be wireless for that room. The DPW, the DPW parking lot was recently repaved and Burridge and Townsend Harbor Road have been paved as well. Whalen Road will be milled on May eighteenth and May nineteenth. The excavation for the ADA assessable ramps on Whalen Road per the public rights of way ADA plan uh, the board approved um, this last year will occur on May twenty-fifth. And the road will be repaved on June ninth. Electric Ave will be milled at night on May twentieth and will be paved at night on June seventh. And the DPW director has worked with the engineer and Unitel to relocate a utility pole that is in the area of work for the Flat Hill Road culvert project, which will make the project um, go easier. And the DPW is performing some drainage improvements on Whalen Road, Goodrich Road and Pleasant Street. The North Cemetery garage is almost complete and the DPW will be performing a lot of the landscaping from now until July first. From the assessors, the commercial and industrial inspections are almost complete. The conversion from the old camera system to the new assessing software, which is Vision, will be complete shortly and um, will be done so in time for the preliminary billing. The RMV was delayed in sending out motor vehicle excise taxes that should have come in March and um, those are now coming up now. From the finance director, the finance director will be sending out notices to departments shortly about year-end conferences. And the finance director has periodically had to submit reports to the Department of Revenue on CARES Act funding. Um, and simultaneously, the guidelines have changed frequently on eligible and percentages that are eligible towards FEMA reimbursement. So this has been a very confusing and very frustrating part of this whole year. Um, I really feel for the finance director in this because she goes through a lot of work in putting those reports together and then all the rules change and this has happened a number of times. Um, so expenses that we submitted for CARES Act funding um, that were only say um, uh, seventy-five percent attributed to FEMA and the rest twenty-five percent to CARES. Now they're saying some of those expenses are hundred percent eligible under FEMA, so it changes, um, those changes are gonna be time-consuming. There you go. For land use, um, selectmen, uh, Dwyer went through all of the, the land use updates. For the library, the library director and the library board of trustees are in the final phase of gathering data for their long-term strategic plan. And the vacant staff librarian position that has been vacant this past year will be advertised shortly. For the fire department, the entire fleet is back in service. Calls have been picking up recently. Uh, two full-time members of the department are almost complete their paramedic training. And um, when um, that level of uh, where we're at for paramedics, the chief expects to be able to apply for the paramedic service by this fall. Treasure collector at the lockbox company will be changing in fiscal twenty-two in order to save in lockbox fees. And sufficient notice of the address change will be given um, at a future date. And fourth quarter taxes were due on May third. From the town clerk, the town clerk began pull, using pull pads at town meeting that electronically check in voters and it was reported that the system worked well this past Saturday.
If I may stop there for a second, the town clerk was going to uh, employ, at least we got told uh, sometime last year, maybe in the summer, uh, voting, electronic voting mechanisms, when, when is that slated to be put into place?
Uh, so we have all that equipment. Uh, the town clerk did not wish to initiate it at this coming town meeting, she received, um, her office received complaints about um, the votes being so transparent as far as, because it would put the total number of votes up on the screen, a percentage, it calculates it by people using these electronic clickers. Um, she's also wanted to take in consideration and consultation with the town moderator, what his preference is. I did do a training on it, um, a few weeks before town meeting. Um, from my end, it would require double the amount of slides and the, you have to install special software um, that allows the PowerPoint presentation to add a unique slide for that vote. Um, so, and which is tied, would be tied into my computer on stage, the town computer that I use for meetings. Um, and it would, um, the wifi would be used for that, for the tallying. Um, and it would have to be timed too, so you'd have to set a, a timed amount that people would be able to be respond, so there are some logistics. Um, I think maybe um, testing it out in a smaller environment first would be really useful to see how it works.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, from IT, um, they reported that Comcast users have been experiencing some issues around town, which Comcast has been addressing. And the IT director is currently looking into a cybersecurity assessment. And meetings, events and other announcements, the spring two thousand twenty-one yard waste days are the following Saturdays from eight AM to four PM, May eighth, fifteenth and twenty-second, and that information can be found on the town website and the DPW page. And that information can be found on the town website and the DPW page for more information. And the library, like I said, is seeking input from the community to inform their long-term strategic plan. Please consider filling out a survey, uh surveymonkey.com. R L P L two thousand twenty one. Or you can fill out a paper copy and return it to the library and paper copies are also available um at the town hall. A reminder that the Pleasant Street Bridge over Pearl Brook will be closed starting June first. And the annual town election is Saturday, May fifteenth. Polls open at seven AM and close at five PM. And for the COVID nineteen.
Hold on, Adam Town Manager, um Ms. Adams.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions in the town manager report. Um, the excise tax, um, are those being mailed out or have they been mailed out, the ones that were missing?
I do not believe they have been mailed out. I will, um.
Okay, we didn't to try to pay my excise tax because I'm like, oh, I think I'm delinquent. And they said, you don't have a registered vehicle. And I'm like, I think I do. So they said there was something going on. So I'm needing to be compliant. And I said, so I owe nothing. And they said, you owe nothing. And I said, okay, then we're fine.
Not the only person that showed up looking to pay it, which is nice.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm at the same address with the same vehicle, but um, so I'm glad you put that in the report. I'm sure that helps people to hear because I was, you know, kind of nervous about that myself. Um, and then in the land use updates, the one section that I think wasn't mentioned by um board member Dwyer um that I did see in the report was something regarding eighty-eight Mass Ave. And we haven't talked about the green leaf botanicals for a while. It appears they're um going to the zoning board. Is that because they were too close to residential property as we suspected?
Yes.
Okay, so they're looking for a waiver from the bylaw we've never implemented.
The um, the land use director told me they're pursuing a special permit from the the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is the RMV, is the excise tax delay the same problem that caused the inspections to be uh
I believe. Yeah, their system was hacked.
Hacked, okay. It was the same thing, okay.
And is it related to the delay in the federal income tax returns?
I don't know about that.
Okay, just joking.
Uh, so um shorter report on COVID nineteen updates. Uh, the board of health issued their weekly update. The total number of positive cases reported to the town as of April thirtieth was seven hundred and seventy-two. The state report showed seven hundred and thirty-four cases as of April twenty-seventh. And that's an increase of five cases from the previous week. For town offices, Eagle House and the library, uh town offices are now open during all normal office hours, which are Monday and Wednesday, eight AM until four PM and Tuesday and Thursday, eight AM until six PM. The Eagle House is now open Monday through Thursday, eight AM until five PM and Friday is eight AM till four PM. And the Lunenburg Library is now open for browsing Monday through Thursday, ten AM until two PM and Saturday, ten AM till two PM. And one other um update COVID related, I attended a meeting this afternoon um regarding the Neshoba Valley Regional Vaccine Clinic, updates on that. Um, so there's a lot of logistics that are still being worked out as far as operation of um uh how that center would operate. Um, we are looking for volunteers from each of the member communities, both clinical and non-clinical. So clinical meaning paramedics, EMTs, nurses and doctors um to help run the clinics. Um, and non-clinical, uh, those people would just be volunteering to help assist with the operations um during the day. So if anyone in the community wishes to volunteer for either of those roles, if you have those uh that clinical background or non-clinical and would like to volunteer, you can email me at hlemieux, L E M I E U X at lunenburgonline.com and I will get your information to the appropriate party.
Also make a semi PSA here that for those who haven't been following, all the uh getting up at four in the morning and trying to be the first online for the for the COVID vaccines to make your appointments. Those days are long gone in Massachusetts, at least. Uh, the vaccine appointments are readily available at most CVSs and other places that that provide the vaccine. So if you haven't done it because it's been crazy trying to get an appointment, I can assure you now that's not the case. So please, anybody who wants to get the vaccine, you should be able to get it pretty readily and certainly within a a ten mile radius of your home. Uh, so I was able to schedule my second shot and change my appointment, which was supposed to be in Winchton. And that was made a month ago and got it in Fitchburg, which was three miles away on Sunday. So uh they are readily available at most places.
If I uh can add on to that, um, because this was part of some of the discussion today, the take, meeting today was um within the, it was reported from someone else who runs a regional clinic that within the last seven days, um, the demand has decreased, decreased dramatic dramatically from what it was. Uh, they seeing a significant decline in the number of people um with appointments at the the clinics. So um like Chairman Alonso said, um, there are plenty of uh vaccines available. Supply is there. There's more regional clinics now that have been approved by the state. They're closing for the mass vaccination sites um and redistributing those vaccines to the regional sites. Um, I would also add, if you have uh need multiple appointments, hoping that, you know, if something opens up and that you can get something sooner or somewhere closer, that you please contact um all the other locations, um, because they have had a lot of those instances as well where people be not contacted and they have no shows. So that um is not good either.
And as a last word, I would just say, please, I would encourage people highly to get the vaccine. It really will change. Uh, and if everybody's desire is to get life back to normal, that would be the simplest and fastest way to do that. So I encourage people everywhere to get it. Okay, uh, upcoming meeting. So next week we have a meeting on Zoom, definitely. From what I hear from the uh from the board members tonight, probably our May eighteenth one will remain on Zoom. Uh, while the town manager and I with the with PAC try to organize the technical requirements and then make it known to all the board members what the onsite parameters would be, if we could have people there, how many, if we'd have to wear masks and so on. So we'll continue monitoring that. And every meeting I'll try, either myself or the town manager will provide an update as part of that. But for the time being, we'll we'll remain on Zoom. And of course, May fifteenth is town election uh two, a week from Saturday. Any public comment from the public? If you are on the phone and want to say something, it would be star nine. So I see your hand raised. And seeing no hands raised. Do we have any public comment from the board? Also seeing no hand raised. So then I would entertain a motion to adjourn, having completed the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All right, everybody, everybody moved it and everybody's secondary, okay? And uh, Ms. Adams.
Hi.
Mr. Dwyer.
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries.
Hi.
Mr. Marino.
Hi.
And an I for myself. Take care, everybody. We'll see you next Tuesday. In the interim, take care of yourselves, take care of each other. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.